I'd like to call this meeting to order. And welcome here, everyone. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Councilor Bill Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Noting we are celebrating 150 years since the community of Steinbeck was established, I recently decided to take a walk along the Johann Barkman Heritage Walkway to discover some of our community history. This walkway is the full length of Elmdale Street, and it was the center of the village with a total of 20 lots. Eighteen families settled here, with two families having double lots. One thing that stood out to me was that three of the lots belonged to the Barkman families. My maternal grandmother was Helen Barkman. So this brought me to visit my mom, who lives at Mill Creek Condos on Barkman Street, knowing that my mom has a Barkman genealogy and history book. Three generations of my family were part of the original settlement. The oldest resident was my four times great grandfather, Jacob J. Barkman, 80 years old at the time. His son Peter K. Barkman, my three times great grandfather, 48 years old. And his son, well, hold on a second. Father Jacob was living with Peter at the time. His wife had passed away. The third generation was Jacob T. Barkman, 26 years old, my great great grandfather. And he was the father of Johann K. Barkman, mayor of Steinbeck for 25 years, who this heritage walkway is named after. And also the father of my great grandfather, Peter G. Barkman. My focus today is Peter K., my three times great grandfather. Peter was a certified millwright, trained in the Ukraine, where he built several windmills. The first couple of years of Steinbeck was about building houses and barns just to get established. Wheat was sent to Winnipeg for milling. But in 1877, the finances allowed true settlement and a priority to build a windmill to grind our wheat. The project was supervised by Peter K. Barkman, with logs cut in La Brocre and Marchand for the wooden structure. And nearly all the parts, including those made of iron, were manufactured locally. Unfortunately, the winds in Steinbeck were poor, and the windmill could not keep up with the demand of the community. So three years later, in 1880, they set up a steam operated mill, and again, Peter was involved. In the meantime, they disassembled the windmill and sent the parts west, to West Reserve, to the community of Rosenhardt. Peter K. Barkman going to that village to set it up for its new owners. Something that plagued the milling business more than the lack of wind was fire. The steam powered mill that was built in 1880 was destroyed by fire in 1892. With the resilience of the business, they quickly rebuilt a much larger facility. And again, one of the owners was Peter K. Barkman. In 1920, the fire mill once again burned. And again, the mill was immediately rebuilt. In '31, again, fire claimed this mill, demanding yet another rebuild. K. R. Barkman, at this time, mayor in the future, at the establishment of the incorporation of Steinbeck in 1947, mayor at the time, was one of the owners. The first mill was driven by wind, the next three steam, and the last one till the era of electricity. The last fire mill was on the site of Shopper's Drug Mart and Mill Creek condominiums. Today, the windmill that graces the grounds of our Midnight Heritage Museum is a replica of the original windmill built by Peter K. Barkman. According to record, it's the only operational windmill in all of Canada, producing approximately 3 pounds of flour per year, 3,000 pounds of flour per year, about half of which, half of it is used to bake bread that's served at the livery barn, and the rest is sold in 3 pound bags at the museum gift shop. This is quite a heritage to be a part, quite a heritage to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Council, we have the agenda in front of us. Just before we have a motion to adopt, I'd like to add two items. One under number eight, reports and recommendations to the city manager, the Dwelling Unit Safety Standard Bylaw, 1157. And under other business, number 12, the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee. We've got a report on that, and we'll be making a decision on that later on. But looking to adopt the agenda as changed. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Swestra. Call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We've got the minutes of August 6th, 2024, the regular council meeting on page one. Looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Siemens. Call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Are there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none. Looking for a motion to excuse Councilor Damian Penner. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Penner. Call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Well, that brings us to 7:35, and we have a public hearing. This is for V. 2024-09. This is referring to Unit 240, North Gate Drive. At this time, I will close the council and open the hearing. Mr. Workin, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Variance file application, or application for, for variance file V-2024-09 for property with civic address of Unit 240, North Gate Drive. The owner of the property and the applicant for the variance is Manitoba Electric Board. Purpose of the variance application is to permit barbed wire atop of a fence in the C3 commercial corridor zone, whereas City of Steinbeck zoning bylaw 2100 only permits barbed wire atop fences in the M2 heavy industrial zone. Notices, as are required under the Planning Act, have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file with respect to the application. The, the owner's stated purpose is to protect its assets and secure the subject property. Administration has provided council with two items of information regarding precedent files and recent decisions of council. Recommendation from administration is that council approve the application subject to any new information being provided at the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. Is the applicant here present today?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak? If you, if you do, you take the podium, state your name and address, and then...
Hi there. Thank you for allowing me to join the meeting tonight. It's, it's my honor. My name is Rob Crywy. I represent Manitoba Hydro. I represent the group that uses the yard in question on a regular basis. And I'm here happy to answer any questions about it. I was involved in the procurement of the land, and I do believe there was an oversight that we didn't notice the zoning restrictions based on our normal build guidelines. But I certainly would like to express appreciation, if you allow that to stay as is, so that we can, as stated, you know, have proper site safety and security of our premises.
Okay, so the variance is coming just from an oversight, from not checking the zoning to see if this was allowed? And now, this is a requirement to save, to protect your assets that you have on the, on site?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none. I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilor Swestra?
Make a motion to approve the variance.
Seconded by Councilor Hebert. Go ahead, Councilor Swestra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, most properties in Steinbeck obviously do not have barbed wire for obvious reasons, and it's not the most aesthetic thing. However, there are cases where there are some zoning categories that do allow it. Heavy industrial, M2 allows it automatically. In this case here, it's Zone C3 commercial corridor zone. And I think the request is a reasonable one in this case, that Manitoba Hydro wishes to protect its assets. It's not hard to see why they'd be putting in that request. And I would also note that there's no one in the area who has come to the public hearing to express any concern. In addition, our staff are recommending approval. So with the staff recommendation and the fact that no one from the public has expressed any concerns, I think we can go ahead and approve the variance.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I realize that over the years, there have been a lot of thefts from Hydro. The equipment that they have in there and the product, especially the copper wire and stuff, is a attraction to a lot of thieves. And the thefts that you do have are major. They're very, very expensive, and so I can see the validity in your request.
Anything further, Council? Anything closing? I have no objections to this file either, so, Council, call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you. Okay, Council, we will move to number eight. This is reports and recommendations of city manager. This is the Dwelling Unit Safety Standard Bylaw, 1157. Mr. Workin, I will have you introduce this file.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please bear with me. I'm running, running a few operations here today. I'm chief cook and bottle washer today. With respect to the, the City of Steinbeck Dwelling Unit Safety Standards Bylaw 2157, there was intention of administration to present this report a little bit later this fall, but given the light agenda that was present today, I thought it was appropriate to, to bring it forward today. And thank, and appreciate council's adoption of the revised agenda to do so. But just for some background, council passed this particular bylaw in 2021 to regulate the presence of secondary suites within the City of Steinbeck as a way to ensure safe housing and to address life safety standards in particular. The bylaw provides the expectation for all secondary suites to comply with certain standards. However, during the review, the expectation for all rental suites in Steinbeck to comply with the National Building Code would result in some significant degree of revisions and possibly decommissioning of existing rental suites. And as a, an alternate model, City of, City of Steinbeck Council considered a Dwelling Unit Safety Standard Bylaw as an alternate measure, which essentially would ensure that basic life safety components would be required within rental suites all across the city. And generally, that is not limited to, but things like smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and appropriate types of egress are measures that are actually listed in that bylaw. At the time of adoption, administration rolled out a public awareness campaign. The intention, the intention was to educate and inform the public, make homeowners aware, make rental suite owners aware, and more importantly, make tenants aware that the bylaw was, was being enacted. And what the city tried to do is, is get the community to comply voluntarily. Administration has now determined that voluntary measures have been insufficient to bring all of these suites into compliance. Based on our estimation, there could be up to several hundred of these secondary suites present in Steinbeck that we are aware of. However, only several dozen to date have taken voluntary measures and contacted the city to ensure that, that they do comply with the bylaw. The city has also seen several recent house fires, and especially in the case of some rental suites having, or rental properties having basement suites that were found to be not in compliance with the required bylaw. Thankfully, there have not been any significant injuries to residents or to firefighters. But it is recognized that a more proactive approach to this matter is needed. The city is now at a point where administration will be reaching out directly to those property owners who are, I believe, to have a basement suite or a secondary suite within their existing dwelling. Owners will be notified of the potential noncompliance and be given an opportunity to update the property. Outstanding work orders will be considered and, if necessary, placed against the property if compliance is, is, is not followed. The order would obviously be removed if a suite is brought into compliance. In a worst case scenario, depending on the particular property, if a property is unable to be corrected, there is a possibility that a complete decommissioning of the suite would be required. Administration will be preparing an immediate awareness campaign to encourage homeowners and tenants to contact the city and to request inspections for any basement suites that they might be aware of. Even though we still believe that the best method of compliance is voluntary, the city will be moving forward with these more proactive measures effective immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Workin. What, what will be the outcome? If we, if this is all gone through, we've been proactive, we've contacted the landlord, we've gone, done an inspection, we've sawn deficiencies. What will the outcome be if the deficiencies are not repaired? Be beyond, like, beyond some, the few that will have to be, obviously, completely, like, decommissioned, okay? We understand that. But what about the ones that are in good shape, but just don't comply with egresses or something like that? What, what will the city's line of, of approach be on that?
So you're asking what the worst case scenario could be?
Yeah, worst case scenario.
Well, like I said, the method of voluntary compliance is always much preferred. The city does, does have a vested interest in, in providing, a vested interest that the community provides safe housing to its residents. However, as with most bylaws that the city enacts, there are fine provisions contained within it. The fine provisions that are present within this particular bylaw are significant. But given the potential risk, especially with some of the more recent house fires that have occurred in Steinbeck, that the city believes that is an appropriate step, if necessary.
Thank you, so the fines are significant?
The maximum fine for noncompliant property is up to $1,000 per day that the noncompliance continues.
Okay, so, worst case scenario, compliance continues. It's $1,000 per day for having a, a secondary suite or any kind of dwelling unit at all that does not comply?
Correct.
And, and this is something we're going to be proactive going, going, going through our, our lists that we have and making sure that these suites are compliant?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, Council, given the, given the fact that we looked at this in 2021, and, and knowing that now the, our, our staff had intended to be working on this on a, on a lighter agenda in September, I think it, it makes sense it came forward today with our light agenda. But I also believe that in, in light of the recent fires that we have seen, we are thankful that no one has been, that there haven't been serious injuries in any way. But I do believe this is a good way to start to, to address the situation in our city. And I think going, being proactive, contacting, because if, if there were several hundred and only several dozen actually came up and voluntarily said, you know, come, come check our suites and, and made changes. I think we need to be proactive, go out into our community and, and start, start rectifying and making these right. And so, this is something I could really support and get behind. And even, even though the, the fines are significant, the value of life is very significant. And that's why I think I would, I would support these, these strong fines of $1,000 per day for noncompliance. Council, are there any comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Hebert?
Going back to when we campaigned in 2018, I'll be pers, I'll be quite frank. I was quite disgusted at the number of homes I saw where there was delinquent secondary suites. And talking to the fire chief at the time, he indicated that they had gone to a number of these homes and issued warnings and stuff, and there was still no compliance by these people, whether it's extinguishers, whether it's alarms, whether it's proper egresses. And so I'm 100% in favor of this.
Thank you. Councilor Swestra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Support moving in this direction as well. This is a natural extension of the discussion and the bylaw that we passed in 2021. And for the last few years, staff have been working on dealing with, with reports and encouraging voluntary compliance. And in the cases where we don't have voluntary compliance, it is important that we protect life and safety. That's, that is just absolutely fundamental. So I would certainly support us moving in this direction.
Councilor Penner, then Councilor Siemens.
You know, it, it is disappointing to hear that only a few dozen landlords have voluntarily applied. I remember in 2021, we had quite a significant information campaign to raise awareness for this. So, yeah, it's unfortunate. This is only for tenants, which is obviously very important because they live there on a day to day basis. But it's also for firefighters. It makes it unsafe for firefighters when they respond to a call and the suites aren't up to code. So I support this as well. Yeah, both for those two reasons, for to protect our tenants and also to protect our firefighters.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with many of the comments made. The, this has been talked about longer than 2021. That's when we enacted the bylaw. But we had probably talked about it 10 years prior. And many times, we had been reminded by the fire chief of the situations that they walked into, whether it started with the smoke detectors or carbon monoxide or egress, all the different issues. We do have people that, landowners, landlords, who have rental properties. And we do need to put compliance and enforcement into place. So we've gone the route of building the bylaw, having an education program. It is time to put enforcement into place and compliance. The downside that I see of this, and I think one of the reasons that council has held off to put compliance and enforcement in play is potentially there will be a loss of many low end rental units in Steinbeck when there are a lot of homeless people already and, and a lot of different situations that are affecting all the communities. And so this will potentially stress that situation again or more, where people will be out of a low rental unit because they have to put compliance into place. And so their rental units in Steinbeck are at a premium already. I understand that. But there are people who can't afford the, the common rental rates that are enacted in Steinbeck. So I think that's my, that's has been my fear, maybe, many councilors as well. But it is time to step up the enforcement compliance. That I don't disagree with. So there, I, I just fear what, what the rental units we could lose. But I think the, the danger of fire and the safety standards that not only Steinbeck, but the province has enacted many years ago on secondary suites is important, that we realize that, and we do need to do something about it.
Yes, Councilor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also do support this, enforcing compliance. And I would want to go one step further, like for homes that are, that have bedrooms in the basement, for families even, to upgrade to egress windows, I think is very important. But especially in rental units where people are paying rent, to have safety is so important. So I would support this for sure.
Well, Council, I, I agree with the comments that you, that you've said. And I can really appreciate the comments from Councilor Penner and Councilor Siemens. I think too, we don't think, we don't necessarily think of our firefighters, the men and women that serve us and, and keep us safe in fires. They're, they're cut from a cloth that when they, someone says there's someone in that building, they go, they don't, they don't necessarily think twice, they just go. And I think the safety for them is, is utmost as well. And Council, Councilor Siemens, I do agree. And, and I, and I fear losing some of the, the lower, the lower cost rentals. But what does it cost to put in an egress? What does it cost to put in a fire alarm, a fire extinguisher? These are small, small costs. Should not affect the cost of the rental that much. Just for, to have a safe egress, to have peace of mind that a fire, that an alarm will go off if there is, is something in the building. I, I think these are, we all have them in our homes. They don't cost a lot of money. And, and I do believe that, that this is, this is something that should be supplied. This is basic health and safety for residents in Steinbeck. So Troy, Mr. Workin, I'm sorry. I see that you have council support to go ahead with this. And we also have your back when it comes to charging the, the fines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we've got nine administration. We've got accounts payable back of the book. All have a chance to review. Looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Hebert, seconded by Councilor Siemens. Call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, we've got nine B. We've got the auditor appointment on page 13. Every year, we do have to have a firm that will audit our, our tax return. We've had Reed and Miller do it for the last few number of years. They've been, they've been, they've done a great job for us. And looks like it's time to reappoint. Reed Miller, chartered professional accountants. Just looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Penner, seconded by Councilor Swestra. Any comments?
No.
Okay, we'll call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We have businesses license, business license on page 15. Looking for a motion to approve. Councilor Siemens, seconded by Councilor Hebert. Call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Council, we've got business, or the building permits. We've had a good year, or a good month, sorry. We've added, we've added a number of, of house units. Looks like the residential is definitely taking over this year. And, and, and as last year was less, this year was, is more. Council, looking for a motion to approve. Councilor, Councilor Penner, seconded by Councilor Swestra. Okay, any comments, Councilor Penner?
Yeah, this is interesting. I believe, if I recall correctly, at the beginning of the year, commercial wait, awaited residential. And now that seems to have flipped. I mean, over the course of time, it ends up averaging out. But it is nice to see, we have a lot of commercial going on in our community right now. It's nice to see that there's also residential to build, support, you know, the growth of our community in terms of, in terms of, you know, employment that was being added through all this commercial as well. So this is very encouraging. It's a great year so far.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a strong month, just over 12 million in residential and just under 3 million in commercial slash industrial. So definitely a, a strong month and a strong year overall so far.
Anything further, if counsel? Yes, I, I do agree. Great year. We've added 54 total dwell units for a total year to date of 151. Year to date, we've got 32.6 million dollars in residential and 18.5 in commercial and industrial, which, you know, it's, it was very much a flip flop of last year. Like, it was just, it's, but that's how we get averages. But it's a very good year, seeing residential definitely take over. Okay, call for the question. All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Are there any questions of council? Are there any questions of counsel? Okay, seeing none. We've got correspondence petitions, we've got the Association of Manitoba Municipalities' member advisory, this is the Manitoba Municipal Board Operational Review. Counsel, would you like to proceed, take his information? Okay. And we have, in other business, we have, there's additional package with our agenda, and this is the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee. Now, they have been, they've had a northern one running for some time, and they've started the Eastman one now, and we were invited to. I couldn't go, so I sent Counsel Jake Siemens in my place, and he's done a bit of a report, so I will let him definitely speak to it. But in the end, they're going to be looking for a motion from us to either, I guess, join or not join, correct?
That's right.
At this time, Counsel Siemens, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As already stated, Mayor Funk asked me to attend the second meeting of the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee on August 12th at the RM Tache office. The ERMC, or the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee, is a new organization to Southern Eastman region. It's made up of all municipalities south of Number One and east of Highway 75. The following, and so there's always been a northern, so this is a southern subcommittee. There always has been a northern subcommittee that's been operating the last 10 to 12 years with all the municipalities north of the Number One Highway in Eastman. So now they're trying to set up a subcommittee on the south side of Eastman. So the following RMs, we're attending this meeting, Towne Saint Anne, Armagh Saint Anne, Armagh Hanover, Armagh Montcombe, Armagh Pyne, Stewartburn, Tache, the Village of St. Pierre, and the City of Steinbeck. The first meeting was also attended by Le Brocre, RM of Le Brocre, as well as, there's one other one.
Reynolds.
The, and additionally, the AM Eastern Districters, Lauren Chenko and Ray Sherrill were also attending. And the Eastman Regional Municipal Committee is at arm's length to reporting to the AMM in that regard. This was a second organizational meeting for the group with intent to formally organize by accepting and approving mission statement bylaw, election of chair and vice chair, and appointment of administrator, and a fee structure, which was done at that meeting. What it is, is the ERMC has been around for approximately 10 years, operating only in the northern portion of Eastman. The intent here, really it's a lobby group, it lobbies the province. It's committed to sharing mutual concerns, determining priorities and lobbying the province of Manitoba to make changes that benefit all taxpayers, residents of member municipalities, enhance effectiveness of the ERMC. It's decided to form a northern subcommittee and a southern, so the northern one has never been officially, but now we will have two separate subcommittees. And the mission is to lobby the government on regional issues and regional policies, programs, inclusive of funding on infrastructure, healthcare services, education, public safety, while addressing ongoing areas. So you can read that there, and the fee structure is $750 a year. And I also put my thoughts on where do we go from here? The short answer is, I think the ERMC potentially has more to gain from Steinbeck, supporting the groups with all the member organizations initiatives, than maybe it would be for the RMs to support our initiatives. But we do have a lot of common concerns regionally, the condition of our highways, our waterways, our waterway crossings, intersection upgrades, downloading of roadways adjacent to highways, we see that here, especially now the road away from the MHV to Integrity, always, there's always discussion that the province wants the city to take that over. Permission for bike lanes in highway jurisdictions, that has always come up at our AMM events, that there's, Manitoba highways does not want bike paths directly beside the highway, but when you go through communities, that request has always been there for, as a lobby from AMM is also from regional. And there's other issues that could come up. The northern subcommittee of the ERMC has successfully lobbied the province for a variety of funding dollars, the largest is the final approval, that they talked, it was like Kirnhof and Lactoboni. But they've successfully lobbied for improved bridges, highway improvements, and other successes, they spoke about a variety of different things. Steinbeck would do well to be part of a larger regional agenda. In this way, participating on a committee of this type, at least we could start that way, and then understand if there's any value, further value for the city to be there. It would build relationships with local RMs, build a stronger voice for regional projects, and potentially a louder lobby at the provincial level. On another note, having a long history from 1982 with the town and then the city of Steinbeck, I also remember when we had an urban AMM and a rural AMM, and the infighting that was, and provincially, they would conquer and divide. And so the funding and the lobby groups, the more lobby groups you have to the province, the more split we could potentially get. But we have a common theme with AMM, and AMM is in full approval of this, so we are part of the AMM group. My concern is, many different lobby groups attending the legislature with many different issues, that could water down what all the requests are as well, that could be the downside of this as well. But overall, this gives us access to what the RMs are thinking, what their projects are, have an understanding of maybe what their shortcomings are, whatever, it would give us an ongoing place to have discussions with the other RMs. And meetings are once a month.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel.
Can I just ask a question, a clarification? Why are we adding this on top of AMM, or how do they work together? I'm just not clear, because I thought AMM was our lobbying group, so I'm not sure why we're adding this, if you could just clarify that.
I asked that same question at this meeting, because AMM is the lobby group. But this is, what I was told by the northern directors who have been participating in the northern subcommittee for the last 12 years, is that it's just more voices at the legislature on issues that concern them. And the AMM is provincial as a whole, and this just gives, reinforces the need that Eastman has needs as well. There is one other committee like this in the province that's existing, that's in northern Manitoba with the Hub of Thompson, so again, they are...
More question, like who's initiating this? Is it just the municipalities have gotten together, decided to form a lobbying group?
Together with AMM. AMM has approved that these committees exist, and then the municipalities have seen the success of the northern subcommittee, what has happened, and now the southern RMs also would like to do this.
Counsel Siemens, you were there at the meeting, some of the successes of the northern committee, they were what, roads, bridges, that kind of thing?
Waterways.
And not necessarily healthcare, doctor recruitment, retention, that kind of stuff? The things that are really plaguing us, right? There's, like, maybe we have some of the same concerns, like we do use Number 12, like just like the RMs do and that, but we, being a regional center, an urban center, we have other concerns, and that would revolve on quality of life issues, such as hospitals, doctor recruitment, healthcare services, those kinds of things. Was any of that talked about at this meeting?
It was, but this is more on infrastructure than it is healthcare. Healthcare is a provincial and a federal responsibility, it's not a municipal responsibility so forth, but they do lobby that, what the needs are, but not to put dollars towards.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, healthcare is a provincial and federal, that's what they take care of, it's their responsibility, yet we do the seed money, the seed funding, plus we have to do all the lobbying for it as well. So that's why I was wondering, is there help in lobbying for healthcare, because that would enhance the healthcare in their regions too?
I think part of the, so one of the side discussions there was if we could improve the, if we could lobby to improve the health services in VITA, that would take the stress off of the Steinbeck hospital, on emergency or on patient care, because they lack facilities, they have the facilities, they lack the profession there. So in that regard, if we lobby the province, and if they put more of healthcare into VITA, that would also free up some space in Steinbeck potentially. So there are, there was discussions like that.
My only concern there is, again, we're taking our eyes off of what we need in Steinbeck and putting them on what is needed elsewhere. And maybe that's part of being a good neighbor, but I just know what we're facing in Steinbeck, and we need to be proactive and work hard, our own lobbying to get done at Steinbeck as well. Okay, counsel, is there any consensus to join? What's the fee for a year, $750?
$750 a year.
And we were not invited, I don't remember being invited to the...
We were invited to the first meeting.
You were, okay.
They claimed we were invited, I asked that question as well, why we weren't there.
Because the second meeting was the first time I saw anything.
Okay.
But maybe, maybe we missed it.
Is he making a motion on this, or...
Well, yeah, are you...
Well, I'll make, because I attended, and I think there could be some value to it, at least for one year, as on a trial basis, I would make the motion that we join the ERMC.
Okay. Is there a second, Counsel Swaigstra? Go ahead.
I think I've stated the case, I attended the meeting, I am, I don't know if we should become a full-fledged member over all the years, commit to all the years, but I would see us as, we commit to one year, and whoever is assigned to attend would then file a report on a monthly basis, so that counsel can see what is going on, and then we can evaluate it after one year as to the possibilities or whether there's value in continuing.
Thank you. Counsel Swaigstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm comfortable joining on a one-year basis and to see how it goes. Obviously, any opportunity that we have to strengthen advocacy with the province, I think makes sense. There are some areas of common concern, I mean, an obvious one that comes to my mind that I think we've even passed a resolution on in the past, would be, it would be great if Highway 59 was twinned, frankly, all the way to the border. I mean, it's, for those of us who, you know, when we drive to Winnipeg, that's one of the two main ways in which we go, and that would certainly make a difference. There are other things too, that I think that we could benefit from in terms of, in terms of basic infrastructure improvements. I will also say that if the city of Steinbeck's at the table, because we're the largest center in the region, we have the ability then to influence what things are being prioritized by this group when they go lobby the province. And so frankly, I think there's a case to be made that perhaps we bring to the table that we do want some advocacy on healthcare as part of a condition, in terms of the things that we're advocating, that having more doctors in Steinbeck benefits the region as a whole. And if we're at the table, we're more likely to be able to have that voice heard, and then having that combined group of municipalities approaching the province. And so if at the end of the year, if it has not made a difference, or if we feel that our concerns are not being, you know, properly integrated, then we can make a different decision at the time. But the cost is obviously very low, I'm sure that there'd be someone in council who would be able to go to the meeting and then provide us with a report. But I would say that on the whole, an opportunity to continue building relationships with other municipalities and lobbying together with the province on things of common interest, I think that makes sense.
Anything further of counsel? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question. In the documentation provided, the fiscal year of the committee ends December 31st each year. I'm just curious, if counsel is committing to joining the committee for one year, when would counsel like this membership to start?
I'll accept a friendly amendment that we do it for one and one-quarter years.
So to December 31st, 2025.
The fee for this year is $250 on a prorated basis, and $750 for 2025.
I concur with that amendment.
Okay, so we will be voting on joining with the sunset date of December 31st, 2025. Anything further of counsel? Anything closing? Well, counsel, I can appreciate the comments that were said. I do believe that larger urban centers like ourselves and RMs have very different needs and very different challenges, but some of them are the same when it comes to provincial infrastructure. We all have, there's highways that run through every municipality that need upgrading, and we can work on that together. There's pathways that need to be put in, there's bridges that need to be repaired. I'm working for that. And I think if we can negotiate, we'll advocate for this highway, you help us get, you advocate for doctors. I think that could be definitely a way we do a partnership here. So call for the question, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Hebert, call for the question, all in favor, opposed, that is carried. The next council meeting will be Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 7:30. Thank you.